On the radio because Mike's flight has been canceled and he's stuck in Cleveland. Mike, hey, are you there?
I'm here and as much as I'd love to be technical directing the show, I guess I'll just have to take another day off.
Oh, well, good for you, I guess, but you're still, you're stuck there in Cleveland. What's going on? What happened?
Yeah, well, you know, I spent so much time worrying about our flight out from Boston to Cleveland getting canceled. I never considered until I was already here what would happen if my flight home were canceled, but we woke up to a very early email from JetBlue and then another one saying that we are canceled and then rescheduled for tomorrow. And I spent a lot of time-
So you didn't get to the airport?
No, I did not have to have to go to the airport mercifully. We found out from the comfort of bed.
That's good. So, uh, so, you know, you had said that you had worried about your flight from Boston to Cleveland, but not the other way around. Uh, what's, what's the plan now? How are you feeling about getting caught up in all this?
Well, we have an earlier flight scheduled for tomorrow morning, so I'm hoping that if, um, if that flight is canceled, we have a little bit more reaction time to get to, say, I don't know, Columbus or Pittsburgh or Detroit or somewhere within a few hours drive and see what we can hop on from there. So I'm not inconveniencing anyone any further.
All right, Mike, uh, please get back soon. We do need you, uh, in the studios, but travel safe, okay? We're sorry about what's happening.
I'll do my best. Thanks, Peter.
All right, take care. So that was, uh, Mike there in Cleveland. Let's bring in Seth Kaplan, our transportation analyst. Seth, welcome to you.
Good to be here. I better be here, I guess.
Yeah, right. You're, you're, you're where you need to be. Um, we just heard from Mike. He's kind of, uh, stuck there in Cleveland. Zoom out a little bit and tell us what you're seeing in other places across the country.
Well, statistically, as well as anecdotally in my own life, I wasn't traveling this weekend, but my parents were here in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, where I am. Their Allegiant flight from Harrisburg to Fort Lauderdale canceled and Allegiant told them, "We've rebooked you at no charge for Thursday." So I drove them over to Philadelphia, in their case, a nice unexpected visit with, with friends there for, uh, for me. But, um, yeah, that, that's, it's them and many others, including Mike. Today's a mess. Uh, it's a mix of weather and COVID. If you look at the Washington DC area airports, for example, Flight O.R. data, more than half the flights at Reagan National canceled, a lot at the other nearby airports, uh, canceled as well. But if you look at the airlines that are affected, these are also airlines like JetBlue, which impacted Mike, like Alaska Airlines and others, that had already indicated before any of this weather that they were dealing with personnel issues because of the, uh, of the COVID sick calls.
Yeah. On the other hand, Seth, uh, we're seeing that TSA, today I was on their website, they say that more than 2,000 of their agents are out sick with COVID. How does that complicate what's already a mess?
Yeah. For perspective, that's, that's a meaningful number. It's something like four or five percent of, of all their agents out now, uh, because of COVID. And, and so, yeah, you know, this is, uh, peak travel time here, people returning from the new year. And there's not a lot of slack in anybody's schedules. We see what it's done to the airlines. We see what it's doing to TSA. And so you, uh, you know, if you're somebody like Mike thinking of showing up at a different airport, you know, you have to build that in now. Also, very different from earlier in the pandemic when, as much of a mess as it might have been in some ways, not a lot of people were traveling. Now you have travel levels basically back to close to pre-pandemic levels, notwithstanding the fact that the Omicron scare has caused some people to slow down their travel here in the past few weeks.
Well, so, you know, if my count is correct, Seth, we've had you on the air talking about these cancellations since Christmas Eve. I think it was three times, right? So is there any end in sight or is this just a matter of waiting until this Omicron peak crests?
Yeah, the story along, Peter, has sort of been, uh, and I think I've said this to you before, and I don't mean to be flippant, but you tell me what's gonna happen with the pandemic and I'll tell you everything else, right? What's gonna happen in the airline industry? And that's really what it is, uh, ju- just like in so many areas of society, unfortunately, uh, with Omicron, as we know.
I don't seem to telephone people. They're not coming.
They're not coming, they can't listen.
The January 3rd, 2022 Roanoke City Council Regular Session is hereby called to order, and I will ask our clerk, Ms. Susan McCord, to please call the roll.
Mr. Cobb?
Here.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones is absent. Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Here.
Mr. Bestbitch is absent today. And Mayor Lee?
Here.
All right. Uh, is Reverend Landis here? Okay, good to see you. Will be led, uh, this morning, uh, by Reverend Landis, John Landis, who's the lead minister of Growing Families Ministry. What a great name. That's a good ministry. Of Roanoke Valley Church. Thank you for being with us, Reverend. And following his invocation, I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Reverend Landis, if you will, thank you.
Let's pray together. Lord, in heaven, God, we come before you recognizing there's no one like you, that you rule all the kingdoms of the world into the earth. And God, we thank you for the blessing that it is to see a new year. As weird as it is to say 2022, God, we ask that this will be the best year yet for the city of Roanoke. God, we pray for your servants here, that you would give them great wisdom and discernment to guide your people here in Roanoke. God, that you would be with their plans, give them great strength, a spirit of unity, where they can raise each other's arms up in times of need. God, we pray for our men and women of service, both in the fire department and healthcare, uh, in the police department, God, please protect them and help our city, God, to rally, to be more and more unified, to have a spirit of brotherhood and sisterhood, and to look to opportunities to love one another. God, we pray for this meeting, God, that it would be to your glory, that it would be efficient and productive and encouraging, God, and a great way to start off 2022. We pray especially, God, for Mayor Lee, help him and his leadership in a great way, to be strengthened, to be encouraged, to help him to have a great, uh, start to year. Again, with all, uh, Vice Mayor and the councilmen and councilwomen, God, help this to be a tremendous year for them as a great team representing our city. Help them to feel the backing of every man and woman here in the city of Roanoke. We love you. We ask all this in your son's name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
A pledge of allegiance, sit right, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me say Happy New Year to everyone here in the council chamber, along with all of our viewers on RV TV. Uh, I hope you all had a blessed holiday season. And also to my colleagues here on city councils, good to see them and, and, uh, we're hoping that this year is a very fruitful and prosperous year for all of us in the valley. All right. Council meetings will be televised live and replayed on RV TV Channel 3 on Thursdays at 7 o'clock PM and Saturdays from 10 AM to 5 o'clock PM. And video streamed through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the hearing impaired. At the announcements for the city of Roanoke, we're seeking application for the following current vacancies and/or upcoming expiration of terms of office. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, uh, and we recognize, uh, Director of Parks and Recreation, Michael Clark, who's here, are two vacancies. This Park and Recreation Advisory Board, two vacancies. The Roanoke Neighborhood Advocates, one vacancy. The Roanoke Valley Regional Cable Television Committee, one vacancy. The Touring Advisory Board, one vacancy, and that will be a citizen at large. For any of these vacancies, you can access the city's homepage to complete an online application, uh, and they will help you, uh, get your application in. Let me say it's a very easy process, but if you need assistance, contact the clerk's office, uh, either by phone or call, uh, come down and they will direct you because this council always encourages citizens to step forward, to serve on boards and committees, to help us as we govern this seven-time, all-American city. So, thank you for that. The city's clerk's office is accepting applications for two upcoming vacancies on the Roanoke City School Board for three-year terms of office expiring on June 20th, 2022. Three-year terms of office will commence July 1st, 2022, and end on June 30th, 2025. Incumbent school board trustees are Lysiria H. Smith and Joyce W. Watkins. So those are two school board vacancies that we have. Uh, application and information describing the duties and responsibilities of trustees of the Roanoke City School Board are available on the city of Roanoke webpage at www.roanokeva.gov. Or they may be obtained by contacting the city's clerk's office, room up here, room 450, well, the city's clerk's office, and then room 4, at room 456 North C Taylor Municipal Building, which is located here at 215 Church Avenue Southwest, between hours of 8 and 5 PM, Monday through Friday. So again, there are two vacancies, uh, for our school boards and, uh, the deadline to receive applications is Thursday, March 10th. Thursday, March 10th is the deadline, uh, for application for the two vacant positions. Uh, and they are incumbents, but they're still each three-year term, uh, those positions come up for, uh, to be filled. If there are any questions, again, contact our clerk's office. And you can call them at 853-2541 or by email at the clerks, at clerk@roanokeva.gov. Again, we encourage any of you that are interested, please apply and make sure you do it by March 10th. And I know I repeat that, but it seems like every year we sometimes have to extend that deadline because of our applications. So this time, uh, and I think we did that last time, we're gonna be very, we're gonna stay to the deadline of March 10th, uh, for applications for school board members. Thank you. All right, organizational meeting. The city code requires that the first meeting of council in the month of January be referred to as the organizational meeting, at which time council will adopt a resolution establishing the days, times, and places of regular meetings to be held by the council during the calendar year. Uh, the adoption of the meeting schedule for Roanoke City Council commits in January 1st, 2022, and terminating December 31st, 2022. I, I need a motion on this resolution.
Who's the resolution?
Second. All right. I'll ask the clerk to please read the title paragraph.
A resolution establishing a meeting schedule for city council commencing January 1st, 2022, and terminating December 31st, 2022.
All right. Thank you. Are there any comments by members of council? Our first change coming up this month is, uh, is our next meeting date is gonna be on a Tuesday.
That's right.
Okay. Instead of the third, Monday, it'll be on Tuesday. That's all right. So thank you all for noting that. And so if there are no other comments by the council, I ask clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Ah, and the resolution passes. All right. We're now down to the section of hearing of citizens upon public matters. Madam Clerk, do we have any citizens wanting to speak to council?
No citizens to speak at this time.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Uh, let me pause here for a minute. Let me see. All right, we're down now to, I don't know, four, which is the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by members of city council and will be, uh, enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of the items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. There's one request for a closed meeting to discuss vacancies on certain authorities, boards, commissions, and committees appointed by council pursuant to Section 2.2-3711, Code of Virginia, as amended. I need a motion for the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Ah, and the consent agenda is approved. All right, uh... Public hearings, there are none today. I don't remember, number five and, and number six, petitions and communications. Uh, we were to, uh, have a presentation by a caption call, and that has been rescheduled to our January 18th meeting at 2 o'clock PM. Due to the inclement weather, they were not able to, to make our meeting. So we're now down to, I don't remember, seven, which is reports of city officers and comments of the city manager. I will now, at this time, call on our city manager for, uh, the briefings that we have today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Um, we had originally scheduled two briefings today, um, one by the Roanoke Prevention Alliance to, um, provide their briefing on the youth risk behavior study, uh, which they do every, um, two years. And because of the weather as well, they have had to reschedule it. That has not yet been scheduled to a date certain, so I'll certainly let you all know when we get that, um, rescheduled. So we will do the, uh, the general real estate, uh, reassessment. Um, and of course, this is, um, officially really, for us, the kickoff of the, um, of the budget season. Obviously, it, it actually begins with the, uh, the work that you all do at our annual, uh, budget planning retreat, um, which of course took place back in November. But for us, it, uh, it begins with this. And you all know, as I have said in other instances before, that it, it seems in most, uh, cases, we're working on three budgets at one time, and that certainly is the case at this moment, where we're, um, essentially wrapping up the FY21 budget through all of the audit, um, work that's underway. Of course, we're midway through the FY22 budget, and we are, of course, just beginning the FY23 budget development. Um, and so today, we're gonna start, we always start, um, our beginning of the budget work with a presentation of the reassessment information, which we'll share in just a moment. Um, and the reason we do that and we start with this is, um, one, we are, as you all know, of course, a service, um, industry. We provide services. That's, that's why we exist, is provide services to our citizens. And that, of course, requires, um, funding. And so a, the majority of that funding, or a large portion of that funding, um, comes from the revenue that is collected through property taxes. And so that is one of the reasons why, um, this presentation is always one of the most important we do through the budget and always one of the first that we do as we work our way through. The other reason why this source of revenue is significant is it's a relatively stable source of revenue, although I actually have a slide a little bit later that I'll mention to show that sometimes that stability doesn't always play out, but, um, generally, it is a relatively stable source of revenue, which the significance of that is, it allows us to address when there is an increase, um, areas that require that type of stability. So if you think of things, for example, as employee compensation, you want something that you feel you can rely on for an extended period of time. Um, certainly, that, um, that stability becomes significant in that regard. Um, Susan's going to walk you through, as she does each year, um, the presentation, and I know she'll start as she has in previous years as well, in introducing the, uh, the staff that helps her, um, accomplish this. This is not a one-time, um, effort. This is an all-year effort that she and her staff, um, go through, and they do a remarkable job. And I think you'll see some of that through the presentation, and I know you all know that from years past, as we go through as well. So of course, I always want to thank Susan for the work that she has done in leading the staff. And, um, turn it over to her and let her introduce her staff and then get us started. And somewhere in the middle of this, I have a slide that I'll jump in on, uh, on as well. So, thank you.
Happy New Year, everyone. It's a pleasure to come here today. And, uh, Mayor Lee, members of city council, it is always a pleasure to come and give you the residential and commercial updates on the real estate assessments in the city. Um, we're here today to project what we think the land book will look like for July 1, and this will be for fiscal year 2223. So I'll introduce my staff. We had actually two retirements this year. Um, and we haven't had a change in upper management for 17 years. So, uh, we have some familiar faces, but new duties. So I'd like to introduce, oh, they're over here, Casey Bratton. He is now the deputy assessor. And Cookie Hazen is here, and Angela Arnold. Um, she was a appraiser too for 17 years and has moved up to supervising appraiser. Cookie and Angela handle the residential sector of our city. It's about 35,000 properties, and Casey and his team handle the commercial properties. It's about 10,000. So these guys, along with the folks back in the office, do a tremendous job all year long. And we're, I'm just so proud to get to, to walk along beside them and lead them. So, um, does everybody have a copy of the presentation? Okay. Organized here. All right. All right. So the fiscal year 2023 real estate assessment projections are as follows. The reassessment will increase 7.28%. New construction will add another 0.37% for a total increase of 7.65%. Last year, that number was around 3%, so it's definitely higher. Um, this is taxable value that we have changed. Uh, and then the, um, chart at the bottom breaks it down by property class. Uh, you can see that single family is gonna receive an average of 11% increase. Multi-family will come in about 9% increase. Commercial is remaining stable and steady at 2%. And there's our total at 7.65. You can see that our story this year is residential, both multi-family and single-family properties were the, the most increases. This is our assessment history by fiscal year, and you can see this, for this slide, we combined the multi-family and the residential, so it came down a little bit to 10.36. Um, and the reason we do that is because multi-family is owned residential, and we put them in the same category. Um, if you follow the green line, there's our 7.28. So you can see where back in 2013, we have had this increase, little dip last year, and then straight back up. Um, the commercial is hovering around 2% increase. Um, this is what we call, if you look at that green line, um, last year, The Economist projected a V-shaped economy rebound. And Roanoke is no different. We, if you look at that green line, it's a perfect V. So we can see, even if there was hesitation with COVID, um, you can see that the residential sector and overall is rebounding. This next slide is our new construction history by fiscal year. We are down in this category this year. Um, our total new construction is at $37.4 million. Last year, that number was at 60.3 million. Um, we think this is due because of the supply chain. It is affecting, uh, our builders and contractors out there getting supplies in here. Uh, also, the lack of skilled workers we talked about last year is still evident. Also, the lack of skilled workers we talked about last year is still evident on these construction sites. But we really had some great projects this year that we got to complete. CarMax is one, the new medical office over there on Cegy Road, Cardinal Bike, if you haven't been there, that is a really wonderful renovation, and the French farmhouse down on our city market. So those were some of the main ones that we did this year. These next two slides are more geared towards residential, because we really don't have that many commercial sales. We only had 69 commercial sales in the whole city last year. So this is our history of residential sales and foreclosures, and you can see that there were 2,969 recorded sales in Roanoke City Courthouse. Of those, 1,416 are qualified valid sales. Now, our assessments are based on data, and the data of sales transactions, and more importantly, qualified sales. So each appraiser goes out, we inspect the property, we talk to the owners or sellers or the realtors, and we get the information to make sure our website is correct on the information, and we are looking for valid arms-length transactions. Now, you might think, what is a valid arms-length transaction? That would be a willing buyer, a willing seller, without distress. And distressed sales are things like foreclosures, or investor properties, or a divorce, an estate sale. Sometimes those are sold to family members, or there's some kind of conditions involved. So we don't, the Department of Taxation sets our standards for all assessors in Virginia, and they tell us not to use those unqualified sales or invalid sales. So you can see that the inventory is down a little bit from last year. That means it's a seller's market. So if you have a home to sell, now's the time to do it. When inventory is down, this price of housing goes up, and that's what drives the sale prices. The interest rates are at an all-time low. Some are telling me that they got loans at 2.7 to 3.1. So that is another indication of a seller's market. This next slide shows the median residential sale price from 2011 to 2021, and this year, our median sale price of those 1,400 sales was 175,000. I happen to know that, when I do the land book last year, the average assessment for residential in the whole city was 144,000. So for the median sale price to be 175, that shows you an indication of what truly indicates what buyers are paying. And the other thing I noticed about this slide, if you look at 2013 to about 2018, you can see that number hovered around 135 to 140. And then in 2019, it climbed a bit, and last year it climbed, and this year it did as well. So this is a really good slide. We also looked at our region and the state of Virginia, and all is very similar to what we experienced here in Roanoke, so that's a really good thing. All right, so in summary, what is it that you need to know? Our parcel count this year was 45,500, and of those, 41,000 received notices. So that's 90% of our citizens will receive a notice. And you remember that we only mail notices to assessments that change in value. So there's a few out there that didn't change, for whatever reason, but most, all of our citizens will be getting a notice. The city's residential assessed value shows an overall increase of 11%. Now, that does not mean that every single person gets 11%. You know, it's all driven by sales. So if we had a lot of sales activity in the last couple of years in a particular neighborhood, it might be more than 11%. Might be less. So multifamily continues to remain really popular here. I mean, if you follow listings of rental properties, they're gone in 30 days. They're, in most cases, gone in a week, if it's a very desirable area. So rental continues to remain popular, and that increased on average of 9%. The commercial properties, most of the increases were in land values. We hadn't changed the land values in a couple of years, and, you know, most of those properties were getting, mostly in the industrial, in distribution, the Amazon-type properties. So there's your total assessment change is 7.28%, and our state ratios remain in good standards. And this is the slide I like to give to Bob or Amelia, and I'm going to come back and talk about the appeals, how to appeal, and some tax relief programs.
Thank you, Susan. And the reason Susan likes to give this slide to us is because Susan and her staff's responsibility, of course, is following the state code, is to assess the value of property. And, of course, ultimately, that means for us, revenue, sometimes lower revenue, most of the time, thankfully, recently, higher revenue. And so that's what this slide is showing, is that you can see on the left, the FY21 revenue. So this is the revenue realized from the assessments that we've just discussed. So in FY21, of course, the adopted budget had that just below 91 million. The actual actually came in at 93.1 million. I'll explain that when we get to the other. FY22, currently, the budget year we're in, is budgeted at almost 95 million. And then on FY23, based off of the reassessed values that Susan has just shared with you, our projection ranges from 99.8 million to almost 102 million. The way we do the budgeting is, we don't budget assuming 100% of the real estate taxes owed will be collected in the current year, because there are reasons that they are not collected. Now, eventually, we hopefully recover those through collections, but not always in the same calendar year, same budget year. So we don't account for that in its entirety, and there will be probably some appeals as we go through as well that could change some of that reassessed value. But you can see that the result of the increased values in the community are, of course, resulting in increased tax revenue for us. What this is also, all of this information is sharing with us, is that even in spite of what's going on with COVID, the local economy remains pretty resilient, especially in the housing market. No surprise, anyone that's looked at housing prices recently or has tried to buy a house would certainly understand that. The good part of that is, that means people's property values are worth more than they were worth before. The downside of that means that everyone's tax bills go up as well. For us, of course, as mentioned, that means also revenues are increasing. And I mentioned earlier how these revenues are generally stable, and so they allow us to do some things with these dollars that we might not do with consumption revenues for things like sales taxes, which are much more volatile. But I also have to sort of highlight that, you know, it's been 15 years, actually, since we have seen an increase in reassessment or in assessment values, like what you have just had Susan share with you. Right after, that was in 2007. Right after that, of course, the Great Recession hit, and it was almost eight years before the values actually recovered back over 1%. Most of that time, they actually were decreasing during it. So even in those instances where you have a really, really good year, and it is usually pretty stable, things can happen, as it did with the recession. Also, just to keep in mind with these numbers, that by formula, 40% of the revenues that we collect go to the school division, and so these revenues, when revenues increase, they certainly benefit the services that we can provide. They also benefit what the schools can do as well in the community. So again, we present this information just to begin to translate what Susan and her office is working on into what it will mean as we go into the budget development. So the positive part of that for us, obviously, is we have more revenue to work with going forward, and this is only one source of revenue. We will continue to build the other sources, sales tax and some of the others, as we go along. There's a few of them we know will not yet have recovered. If you think of hotel occupancy tax for the lodging tax, or the food and beverage taxes, we know those have not recovered to pre-pandemic levels. So this will help offset some of those changes as well as we go through. So again, this slide is really intended to give you a sense of how those numbers may translate into what we share with you as we start to build the budget as we go along. Susan?
All right, thank you. All right, we're on slide nine, and so this is about appealing an assessment. So if you have a concerned citizen that calls you, and you're going to get some calls, you know, please have them call us. My information is in the back. You know, I would also ask them to check the information on the website that we have for their property, because we get 2.5 million hits a month on that website. And if the information's wrong, then we can certainly help, you know. So it's always good to have them check that, to make sure that information is correct. The deadline to appeal to us, the Real Estate Valuation Office, is February the 1st. The Board of Equalization will begin in March, and their deadline has not been set, but it's usually the first week in April. And if they don't, if the citizen does not agree with what the board's decision is or our decision, they can also file suit in Circuit Court. So last year, we had 132 appeals. Forty-eight of those went to the Board of Equalization. The appeal forms are on our website. If you go to roanokva.gov and choose Departments, and choose Real Estate Valuation, there's a button right there for the forms to appeal the assessment. We also have them in the front lobby of the municipal building, down between the Treasurer's Office and my office. We're trying to encourage folks to call us, and we'll set up an appointment at the property. That would be safe for all of our employees and the other citizens that happen to be in the building. We also have a front lobby drop box, so somebody could come in and drop off an appeal there as well. We also have appeal forms at all of our libraries, so somebody could go to the library and pick up one. The last slide I have to talk to you about is our tax relief programs. We have the elderly tax freeze and the disability tax relief program. Those are handled through the Commissioner of Revenue's office. Basically, if you have an elderly citizen and you think maybe they might qualify, they've got to be greater than 65 years old, the annual gross income cannot be higher than 42,000, and the net worth cannot be higher than 160,000, and they do not include the value of your home. So that is a great program that the Commissioner does a great job with. The Veterans Tax Relief Program is also available, and that would be 100% disabled veteran. Our office handles the rehab program. We currently have about 400 properties on the rehab program, so it's a very popular abatement. We have the land use program, we have solar energy and energy efficiency. So if you think someone's building something new or might qualify for rehab, please let us know. And with that, do you all have any questions or concerns?
One other item I'll add as well, as certainly any questions that you have for Susan. Additionally, as I meet with you individually over the next month or so, there's, as you can imagine, there's a great deal more information behind what it is that Susan is sharing, and I'm happy to actually cover more of that information with you as we go along in our monthly meetings and stuff as well, so.
Susan, I just have a real quick question. With the new construction, do you have a way to determine the new construction as opposed to the renovated construction, because it looks like it's all together? Do we have a real idea of what is really, like, from groundbreaking to brick and mortar, or do you just not keep that separate?
We don't keep it separate, but that's a good question. Most, we don't have very many brand-new.
Brand-new, yeah.
I mean, the ones I can think of right now off my head is District View. There's three more phases, or three more buildings coming on this fiscal year. And then, of course, the old Sheraton, where they're building those apartments out there. Those two are what I consider brand-new. You know, everything else is pretty much decks and porches and Cardinal Bike.
Yeah, I know, we're so landlocked. I was just curious, because I get excited about new construction, but I didn't, I really wanted to know what was really considered new construction, but thank you for answering that question for me.
Any other members of council? Let me ask you about that, Susan, that Vice Mayor was referring to. All of a sudden, there's something else coming up out there on, right off of Herschberger. I knew about the Sheraton and the hotel, but all of a sudden, it's like another building came up overnight. Is that?
Is it the hotel behind KC? Do you know?
Those are apartments, the Little Bridge of Commons, there are 336 units going on about there. It took the old Sheraton and repurposed it for apartments, so the two towers are going to remain. There are going to be eight other buildings there, and they're first of which, 60 units are coming online in March, between March and April.
Okay, okay.
There's also a hotel over there by the Holiday Inn.
Yeah.
That's kind of, all right.
Well, let me, if there are no question, any other?
Just one slight question about the foreclosures. I noticed they continually decline.
Yes.
Can you talk about why there's that steady decline? Because I know that it'd be interesting to know how that overlays with the houses that end up in foreclosure that go to the tax sale, and what those numbers look like in comparison to these numbers.
Yeah, that's a good question. You know, nobody, I mean, I've been here 35 years, so nobody, until 2008, when the market crashed, has anybody asked me to track foreclosures. And then all of a sudden, that was really popular. And even when we were dropping assessments, we only had about 220 foreclosures in a year, where our friends in Northern Virginia and other areas of the state were getting 1,000 a month, you know. So we never hit those. But I think it's just due to the supply chain and, you know, the fact that the inventory of any property for sale is down, so the ones that are getting the, are the ones outbidding other people, you know. So I didn't even mention it. We only had 32. We only had 62 last year. So both years, you know, it's trending that way, which is a really good thing.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, that is a good thing. Any other, you got a question?
Susan, one question. Regarding the median residential sales.
Yes.
I know it's been up going to 175,000, but by quadrant, do you have kind of an idea of median sales by quadrant in the city?
Like north, southeast, west, like that? We do it by neighborhood. We don't really look at them that way. You know, we do assessments by neighborhood, and we know how many are in each neighborhood, but we have probably 250 neighborhoods. So we look at it more that way.
Susan, if there are no more questions, thank you and your staff for the work that you all do in this category. And I've noticed, I haven't gotten, normally I used to, a few years ago, get a lot of appeals and phone calls, and they didn't want to talk to me. Of course, I try to refer them to you, and they say, no, who wants to talk to you?
Well, I have a feeling you're going to get some this time, because, I mean, 41,000, 90% of our citizens will receive one, so we're going to, you know, so just direct them to us, and we'll work through each one of them. And, you know, most of the time, we come to an agreement, and, you know, we want to make sure the information's correct, because, you know, if you have bad information going in a computer system, it's bad assessment. So we want to make sure that's correct, and we have a great team ready to do that. So hopefully, this, you know, variant won't affect us from getting our jobs done. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Good to see you. All right, that information will be filed, and we will now move down to, on our agenda, items that are recommended for action. Item number one is the appropriation of the American Rescue Plan Act funding and Star City Strong Recovery and Resilience Advisory Panel recommendations. There is a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second. I'll ask the clerk to please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the United States Treasury for the American Rescue Plan Act Coronavirus Relief Fund to record and track projects recommended by the Star City Strong Recovery and Resiliency Advisory Panel. It is hereby necessary to itemize the city of Roanoke's project list and to appropriate and allocate specific funding amounts to each project thereof, providing assistance due to ongoing matters related to the COVID-19 pandemic, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2020 through 2022 grant fund appropriations, and dis- sections of the 2020 through 2022 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Any discussion by members of council? Bob, if you could just explain that, because there's a lot of people inquiring about this.
Yeah, and I hesitate to use the term housekeeping, but in some ways, that's what this really is. So if you recall, there was, at the beginning of really our discussion regarding the Rescue Act, we had used the formula that was provided to calculate how much funding we could account for as lost revenue. A lot of jurisdictions took that money and put it in their general funds. We didn't. We said, our budget is balanced. We want to be able to use those dollars out in the community aligned with what was recommended through the advisory panel. So it's just been kind of sitting there, and now what we've got to do is actually account for it in the categories that were approved by the, by the advisory panel. We'll probably do, we may do more of this as we go along as well. So it's really moving it out of one sort of category, if you will, and putting it into the proper category. So it's just one of the steps in the process that we need to do in order to be able to actually continue to spend the dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Mr. Cal, you know, the advisory panel had asked that they be kept abreast of how we allocated those dollars. Would you be sending them a report or just let them know what we are doing?
I will, yeah. I've sent them two since their adoption.
You did, okay.
And they're actually, actually sitting on my computer right now. This Friday, I'll send out the next one for them.
Yeah, because they wanted to hold us accountable.
Yeah, we try to make sure that there's enough of those to make it worth their while, but don't go so long that they haven't had one. It's been, it's been probably a month since we got in the last.
Thank you for doing that. I'm glad you're doing that. That makes a difference. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. I want to thank the city administration and how we, and the advisory panel, and let the public know that this advisory panel is a group of citizens that we selected. So we didn't go in the back room and pick where we want all of this to go. And I say that, and some of you may say, well, I know that, but there are a lot of people, the questions I get, that don't realize that. And so I appreciate the work that we've done, and Vice Mayor was there and Council and selecting people to serve on that panel, and I'm pleased. They've done a good job, even with KES money early on, since we had to deal with this. And I think it says something about our city. I know I've received comments, positive comments from around, people in, in the National Civic League that talked about how we approach that, because there are a lot of cities that do not bring citizens together to indicate or direct them as to where they think this should go. But we brought citizens from all sectors of the city, educators, doctors, lay citizens, everybody to have input. And I'm pleased with what we've been able to do, and I think that says something about our leadership in this community. So thank you, and thank the city administration and Brent and Angie and, and who am I missing?
Mr. Greer.
Yeah, Clarence Greer. Thank you all for your work, and Bob, thank you. All right. The next item. Madam, I got the call. I got you. I want to make it legal. I got it.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and thank you all. The budget ordinance passes. All right, item number two is the acceptance of a donation of funds from the Star City Soccer Foundation for a, you know, I always pronounce this Fustal?
Footsall.
Footsall Court in Preston Park. I tell you, and Michael was there. It worked very well, and Councilman Cobb, we were there, and it looked like, and I see some other folks. Michael, can you come up and just introduce them and tell us a little bit about that? But let me, let me go through and get this voted on the process we have to do. There's two measures. One is a resolution.
I made the resolution.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph?
A resolution accepting and expressing appreciation for the donation of $10,000 from Star City Soccer Foundation to support the development of a footsall court in Preston Park.
Great. All right, any discussion among members of council?
Well, I would just like to say thanks to everybody who made this happen. I know it was a great collaborative effort. It's a great repurposing of the court, and I just love hearing the story of the grassroots effort that started all of this and how, you know, just bringing kids together and providing them the opportunity to play in a field, and then to see how they were part of making this happen too, and the community really became engaged. So I just wanted to thank you all again for all of your efforts.
All right. Anybody else?
Definitely.
All right, Ms. Moon.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Michael, you may answer this when you do the presentation. I'm going to follow up behind Joe on the grassroots. I just want to know what a footsall court is, and I know it's over in my neighborhood, so I'm going to wait till you explain all of that, and then I may have some other questions following that.
All right, thank you. Thank you for having us today. I would like to introduce Landon Moore and Elvire Burbek, and I'm going to let them talk to you a little bit about what footsall is and how this, this came about, because it has been a work in progress for about three years to get everything done, between submitting the idea, internal review, public engagement, and then we had the pandemic, and then identifying a funding source and raising money. So we're finally able to make it happen. So I'm going to let them talk a little bit about what footsall is.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Thank you, Mayor Lee. Thank you, Mr. Cobb and Ms. Sanchez Jones, who came out to the opening ceremony on December 18th for the opening of the footsall court. It was a great day and a great ceremony to celebrate it. Footsall is a game that's played all around the world. It's, it's most like, it's a form of soccer, so it's kind of a combination of soccer and basketball, so it's played on a hard court about the size of a basketball court. And, and so it's, I think Michael said it best to the media at one point, where he talked about the difference between equal and equitable, and this is a big step in terms of, of providing more equitable recreational opportunities across the city. And so this is a first step in, in providing those sorts of opportunities to a more kind of a modern version of what our population looks like. And so it's, it's really, footsall is a game that is, even in, even in these past two weeks of, you know, how brand-new this court is, it's already been used by young children. I've taken my child out there, my son out there, and we've run into other high school age kids out there. Adults are going out there, co-ed groups are going out there. Our great diverse and, 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 and population of immigrants and, and people who are new to our culture and new to our city is something that will be very welcoming and something that they'll be able to take advantage of as well. People who are going to be, it'll be an introduction to, to the game. People will be able to learn about the game, and people will be able to, be able to learn about soccer from there as well. So it's really going to be able to touch, I think, just about everybody in our city in terms of recreational opportunities. And, and so hopefully, you know, this is a great first, first opportunity to do, to do this, the first one in Roanoke, the first one that I know of and pretty certain, first one in southwest Virginia. There are not many of these in the state, and to be honest with you, having said that, footsall is a very popular game, usually played inside during the winters on, on basketball courts. And, and so this, to have this as an outdoor court, people can play any, any time of day, night, the lights are working out there, it's really going to be a big asset, and it's really, it's a unique opportunity. It's a unique project that, that we appreciate from, from you guys at City Council. Michael Clark and his team have really come together to listen to, to myself, Elvire Burbek. Elvire did a lot of research with Roanoke College, and we had a petition of over 400 citizens who signed it. So it really has been a collaborative effort and something that, that I think we can all be proud of, and, and something that hopefully we'll see more of in the future too, as, as we look at other opportunities to repurpose, whether it might be underused tennis courts or just concrete slabs that might be around the city that could be revitalized and can, can get a lot more use there. So, uh, thank you, guys. I hope you accept this money. I think I know how that, that will go, but, but I really appreciate you guys, and this is a big asset for our city and for our, the citizens of our city. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Elvire, did you want to say something, or Elvire, you going to come up and?
I still have a question. Go ahead.
I'm not going to take long. I appreciate, Ms. Moon Reynolds, that this is in your neighborhood? This one's in my neighborhood too.
Okay.
Because I grew up, I went to, so I went to a William Fleming High School, so I had to live in that part of the, part of the neighborhood. So I grew up in sort of northwest, northeast side, 10th Street, Herschberger Plantation Road. So the way I identify this is that I worked with the kids in that, in the Breckinridge School area, and this was identified as a great resource for them based on, solely on some of the demographics and health inequities in that area. So this is why we appealed for this to be in this area, so that's.
Thank you for answering that, but let me ask you on that particular one, with your 400 signatures, were most of them from the Preston Park area?
They were, they were all over the Roanoke.
All over Roanoke.
So we decided to engage the Preston Park area, obviously, as the, as the first go-to, and then we engaged the Roanoke City, because obviously, this is the only one in the city that is an outdoor space like this.
Right.
There are spaces like this, but they're indoor and they're further away from, from this area.
Right.
So it's for the kids, it's for somebody who can walk to it.
Yes.
You know, ride a bike to it or something like that.
That's why I asked, because, you know, we are a very active neighborhood.
I get you.
And you live in over in that area.
Yes, yes, Mayor.
You would be able to understand that.
Yes.
The other question I do have is with regards to the total cost for renovations, and Mike may have to answer this one as well. I know you all donated the $10,000.
Right.
But I'm looking for, what was the total cost, and how much of it did the city contribute to it, as well as from the outside sources?
So what was there before were four tennis courts, and we repurposed two of those tennis courts into the footsall court, and then resurfaced the tennis courts and left two tennis courts there as well for the general public use, but also the Breckinridge Middle School has a tennis program there. So we wanted to use, to leave courts there for them to use. So all of those together, along with replacing the fencing around it and the fencing in between those courts, came out to just under $116,000. So it was, it was quite expensive, and like many of our hard surface courts across the city, they were all put in around the same time, and they're starting to show a lot of wear and tear. And that one in particular had some significant cracks in it, so it took a little bit more to resurface that one than some others that we have across the city.
And was this project part of the one that we had with the Preston Park refurbishing of the tennis courts, as well as the Washington Park basketball court?
Yes, Mayor.
The Huff Lane, was it tennis courts as well?
Well, at Huff Lane, we redid those in 2015.
Okay.
But this one was put together with the same contractor that did the work at Washington Park.
Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
No, thank you. Thank you for your work. We enjoyed that day out there. It was pouring down raining, but there was a lot of enthusiasm right with us, and I appreciate the commitment, and it's good for that neighborhood, as you see, and we want to bring on more things like that. And if I didn't know, if I didn't know that, I'd call it soccer, just saying soccer, but it's, it's something that you can enjoy watching. Could never play it. I could never play it. Wasn't able to, ain't not able to do it now, but good job.
Well, you know, truth be told, we've, we've offered indoor soccer for years at Eureka Center and at Madison Middle School, and it's effectively footsall, but we never marketed it as footsall, because that's what we were afraid of, is that people wouldn't know what it was. So we're hopeful that that term will become more prevalent, and we can actually call it what it is and start marketing it that way as well. But we are looking at other sites across the city. We're looking at Thrasher Park for the potential of one. We're also looking, we got approval from the Melrose Rugby Neighborhood right before the pandemic started to repurpose the concrete slab, or asphalt slab, rather, that's at Kennedy Park, to put a footsall court there. So we're going to work through those as the weather allows.
Would that also be possible for the Marrows Rugby Area, you know, near Marrows Park? Is that a possible site down in that area too? Or is there a lot of youth?
We are looking at fixing those, those courts, but right now, the plan is to keep those, those three basketball courts at Melrose Park.
Okay, but up at the Kennedy.
Yeah, so the closest one would be Kennedy.
And the good thing about it, you all talk to the neighborhoods. The neighbors know they were, what's going on, and what those spaces will be used for.
And Landon has, he has the actual check here that he would like to present if you all.
Oh, real check.
Do approve the, the funding.
That's not familiar.
And it'll go straight down to Evelyn, I promise.
Well, thank you, and Michael, that's a notch that we can put up, that we're the first in the state. I always like to be first on positive.
It's unique for our, definitely, I would say, the first in our part of the state.
First in southwest.
I bet there's some, there's some, in other parts of the state.
Yeah.
It's certainly a big asset for us and unique for our area, for sure.
Great.
Well, I will check you out. In my neighborhood, I'll be fine.
Come out and play.
I plan to.
Madam Clerk, are you ready to call?
Yes, sir. Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. All right, we have a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you read the title paragraph, please?
An ordinance to appropriate funding for the Star City Soccer Foundation to provide for the development of a footsall court in Preston Park, amending and reordaining sections of the, certain sections of the 2021, 2022 capital projects, fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading of this, of second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, thank you. Any discussion or comments from members of council? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the law.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Thank you, guys. All right. Item number three is the acceptance of the FY 2022 Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act. Provide of relief funding to cover increased costs associated with emergency and medical services. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of the FY 22 Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act Provider Relief Funds Phase IV Allocation in the amount of $195,069 by the City of Roanoke from the Health Resources and Services Administration, awarded as a revenue supplement for emergency medical services calls provided by the City of Roanoke in connection with the COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic, and authorizing the acceptance, execution, and filing of appropriate documents to obtain such funds.
Mr. Cal, any comments you want to make on that, or just?
Yeah, I mean, it is, really goes back to the CARES Act. There was funding that was allocated, as mentioned, by the Department of Health and Human Services, which come directly to localities to offset expenses that their fire EMS may be encountering as a result of the increase in COVID cases. And so that's, this is actually the fourth of these, I believe, that we have received as we go through as well. This is separate and apart from the CARES funding that we had received through the state for our other activities, and certainly separate from the ARPA funding as well. So just another resource that, in this case, the federal government has provided to help offset those costs.
Any discussion, members of council? All right, hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the law.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. Thank you all. All right, there's the budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the United States Treasury for the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act. Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, Provider Relief Fund, amending and re-ordaining certain sections of the 2021, 2022 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right. Are there any comments by members of council? Hearing none, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. All right, now, I'm pleased to recognize the city manager for any comments that he would have.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Only a couple of quick items. Of course, first one, I'd say Happy New Year as well to everyone, and looking forward to what 2022 has in store for us. I also, what it had in store for us this morning, of course, was snow, so I also want to thank the city staff that worked this morning. Fortunately, the snow did not turn out to be as extensive as what had been forecasted, but it was still something that needed to be dealt with. And so, crews were out, starting last night and early this morning, working on the streets and sidewalks at municipal facilities and have made really good progress. Sunshine is helping us as well. We are anticipating, though, some additional icing overnight as a result of the temperature drop, so we'll still have crews working to a limited degree overnight as well, and certainly encourage folks to remain vigilant, especially as they get up in the morning and head off to work as well. I will say that last night, as we were all preparing for the storm and having our texts and phone calls and stuff, getting ready for the storm, I did text Sherman Stovall, just to make sure that, just to make certain, I knew he was going to enjoy his snow, and for the first time, I think he actually smiled about snow. So, it was a well-deserved enjoyment of snow for Sherman, so certainly appreciate that. And again, I want to thank the crews for the work that they've done with that, with the event itself. Also, want to kind of highlight yet again, really, the significance of what's going on in our community relative to COVID and the Omicron variant in the community. Of course, cases are going up dramatically. I haven't checked yet this morning, but going into the weekend, positivity rates across the state were well over 25%, which means one in every four people being tested is testing positive for COVID. For us here, that is ultimately going to affect our level of service. I'm confident that if cases continue to accelerate at the pace at which they have been doing so, we will at some point reach a point across several different services where we simply will not have enough people to maintain the level of service necessary while folks are out quarantining or isolating as we go in. Last week, we had nearly three dozen cases, new cases, in the organization, and again, I'm confident we'll have at least that number again coming up in the next week. So, certainly, we'll continue to monitor that. We'll keep you informed, as well as the public, if we start to see levels of service needing to change as a result of the cases. I have talked with the administrators in the other jurisdictions that surround us, and all are facing the same issue. No different, unfortunately, no different at Carillion Clinic as they try to wrestle with this as well as we go forward. And so, therefore, certainly reinforces, again, the significance of making certain folks are getting vaccinated and boosted, as has been clear. That may not prevent you from getting COVID. Certainly, hopefully, will keep you from getting very ill, but also, more significantly, those that are vaccinated and boosted have the opportunity to return back into the workplace much faster than perhaps those that are unvaccinated are able to do so. And I think, again, this is going to be felt across the entirety of our community in all areas, so certainly hope that folks are able to take advantage of the various clinics that are out there as well. And again, if the numbers do start to affect our levels of service, we'll certainly let folks know as we move forward on those, on any types of changes that we need to make. So, those are my comments at this point, and I want to thank you all.
Ms. Cal, I've got just one question.
Sure.
Do you, when do you think, or I know that the CDC has approved the third booster for 14 through 15-year-olds. I think I saw that today. Do you have any word as when that's going to be available? Is that automatically available?
Yeah, once the, once the CDC has approved and the FDA have approved the various opportunities, then those are present at the mass clinic that is operated out at the old Sears facility. So, VDH will honor those, those new changes as they become available. So, should not be an issue. There has not been any type of shortage associated with any of the vaccines that are available. I know it's been almost a month since I went and got my booster, but there was actually no line. Either you can make reservations, or you can certainly show up at the facility. And there are other vaccine clinics going on in the community as well periodically. But yeah, whatever guidelines come out from the CDC and FDA, VDH will be honoring those as they move forward.
Okay. Thank you.
One question. For the vaccinated and the booster employees, is there quarantine? Is it still five days, or is it 14? I mean, how many days is the quarantine period?
It depends, because it depends on whether you're symptomatic or asymptomatic. It is, the safest answer is it's a shorter period. If you're vaccinated and boosted and you test positive, it is a shorter period that you have to remain either isolated from being a close contact, or if you tested positive, being quarantined during that period of time. But it does vary depending on whether you're actually asymptomatic or symptomatic, although as of yesterday, the CDC apparently is now talking about changing that as well, and that may require some additional testing for return. But generally, it's between that 10-day and five-day return, depending on symptoms and non-symptoms, versus the minimum of 14 days if you're not vaccinated and regardless of your symptomatic status as well. So, that's, again, for us, it's a practical app. Not only are people staying safer if they get the booster, but practically, it allows them to return to work faster than otherwise, which certainly helps us be able to maintain those levels of service for as long as we can.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Cal, that generated a question for me. Can we consider the test-to-stay option for employees so that it doesn't impact our service delivery like they've done in New York?
Yeah, they, you can. I mean, for example, if you're vaccinated, you're going to be able to return, and you're not showing symptoms and stuff as well. That's already in there. We are in the process. Of course, the OSHA requirements have changed. Those have worked their way through most of the court system, which is going to mandate either vaccination or a test-out option. And so, we will be implementing that in the middle of this month, and have to have it all in effect early February, I think, is the timeline associated with that. The challenge right now is going to be, where I said there is not a shortage of the vaccines and being able to access those, there are challenges in securing the testing equipment that's necessary. The CDC has started to shift some of that testing into more the antigen testing, which is what we are providing at our libraries, for example, and not necessarily the PCR. Right now, return to work requires a PCR negative, and if you were, if you had tested positive, or an extension of time associated with it. There is the possibility that you'll see some of that go to an antigen test, and if that's the case, that will certainly help us because it's a lot easier to get that. The response to those tests is much faster than the PCR tests. They're not quite as effective as a one-off test. You have to go through a series of those and stuff.
Right, sure.
But, so yes, I do think that you'll see, as we implement the full OSHA standards, you'll see more of that test-to-return type of scenario. Even that's part of what they're having the debate on right now, which is, you know, does, simply because you've tested negative or not showing symptoms, is that really meaning, if you've been exposed, that you're clear? So, we're sort of waiting for the further guidance from CDC, but I do think that will become an option.
Across the board, all departments.
Yeah, yeah. I think that, you know, you'll see with the OSHA requirement, again, most of our employees are vaccinated, and so, it won't affect them in the same way as those that are unvaccinated, that if they choose to remain unvaccinated, we'll be testing to be able to continue to work. And then, I think CDC will give us more guidance on what testing might be necessary for return to work, or an option for return to work as well.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I noticed on your update, your weekly update, you know, you were talking about the impact of service delivery. Of course, nobody wants interruption in their service, so I'm glad that's a viable option.
Yeah, and it's really, where it's really impacting us is the close contacts, which makes sense. If I've got-
Right, sure.
You know, if you've got 30 people who have tested positive, you can imagine that there's probably another 100 around them that are close contacts that are waiting out. Now, if they're vaccinated, not symptomatic, they're coming back. If they're not vaccinated, then there's a longer period of time, and we don't right now have that test-out option because the guidance isn't there yet. So, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Cal. All right. Item B1 is a readoption and reenactment of the Code of the City of Roanoke, 1979, as amended. There's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance?
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to readopt and reenact the Code of the City of Roanoke, as amended, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right. Any discussion by members of council? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Thank you. All right, item number eight is reports of committees. We have none. Item nine is unfinished business. We have none. And item number 10 is introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. 10A is an ordinance establishing compensation for the newly-elected city sheriff and commissioner of revenue. And they are both here today, and I want to offer a, there's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance?
Second.
All right, Ms. Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance establishing the base salaries for the newly-elected commissioner of the revenue and sheriff for the City of Roanoke, authorizing the city manager to execute contracts with both constitutional officers, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right. Any discussion by members of council? I do recognize two new elected officials, and I want to ask them if they could come up and just let the citizens see them today. I mean, I know there's a lot of campaigning been going on, but I think the public out there needs to see who you are and meet you. So, I'm going to ask Sheriff Hash if he would come forward and just share with us anything. Congratulations again on being the sheriff of Roanoke City.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city council, city manager, and clerk, and attorney, citizens that's watching. Thank you again for this opportunity to be able to serve such a great city, this diverse city of Roanoke. I did ask members of our leadership team to come over with me because behind, beside every great leader is a great team. And so, when you see me, you see these individuals standing around chambers. Whenever I come over to chambers requesting anything or asking anything, you won't just see me. You will see the great leaders of our department because, again, we all working here as a unified effort for the betterment of this great city. When we talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion, we're going to make sure that our department represent everything that we have stated that we're going to do for this great city. We are asking that the city council, city manager, vice city manager, those in those particular places, support us in our efforts to make this city great. We are a law enforcement agency. We stand as a law enforcement agency, ready to serve this great city. And so, again, I want to thank you all for this opportunity, this opportunity to serve such a great city. Anything that our office can do for you all, we're one phone call away, just reach out to us. We'll make sure we get somebody to take care of it. All right? Thank you all.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
All right, and new commissioner of the revenue.
Yes. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Manager, Madam Clerk, Mr. City Attorney. I am honored and humbled to be able to work with you, to serve the people of Roanoke, and address their, the needs of the city financially, and working with taxpayers to ensure that all services that we offer through the commissioner's office can be delivered effectively and efficiently. I am looking forward to working with all of y'all and the other constitutional officers as well to help ensure that what we do is done effectively and done as a team, and that we do our best to serve the citizens of Roanoke. Thank you.
Thank you both. Let's give them a hand. All right, let's make this legal now.
They want to get paid, so.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Thank you, guys. Thank you both.
Thank you.
All right.
Good luck.
All right, we're now down to item 11, and 11A, and let me recognize some special work in our community, or in the community, by members of council. And I'm always pleased to do this because I think it says something about the commitment and dedication of our council members that are serving and working in the city, but also doing things outside of the responsibilities that they have to make an impact. And so, at this time, I want to recognize council member Stephanie Moon Reynolds, who was recently appointed to fill an at-large member position on the executive board of the Virginia Municipal League, which is a body that provides us guidance as we go forth. And we congratulate Councilwoman Reynolds for her work and what we expect of her. So, if we got issues with the VML, we got somebody we can throw it down to and ask them, what in the world are they thinking about that? Thank you, Moon, for your appointment to that position, to executive board on the Virginia Municipal League.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Also, I want to recognize council member Joseph Cobb, who was awarded the Heritage Education and Advocacy Award by the Roanoke Valley Preservation Society for his doctoral program dissertation on cemeteries that were disrupted by construction projects during the 1960s and '70s. So, and that's a tremendous award, and we want to congratulate you.
Thank you.
Cassie McCobb and your work and your dissertation on that, and interesting, cemeteries, and that's something that a lot of people, and I know we, there had been some discussion about that, and you've been working on it for a while, so congratulations. I look forward to finish, looking at the finished product.
So do I. Thank you, Mayor.
But thank you. I do want to recognize those council members for their efforts in the community and those things that they're doing to enhance life here in the city. And so, we want to recognize them. All right, are there any comments by mayor or members of city council regarding any activity or anything else that you have that you want to share with us? All right, if not, we'll go to item B, which is vacancies on certain authority boards and commissions. We'll meet to discuss that a little later, once we reconvene following a closed meeting. All right, is there any other thing that needs to come before council right now? Okay, thank you all. And Susan, thank you again for your staff and your presentation. And we will now stand in recess for a closed meeting, and I need about five minutes before we go into closed meeting. I mean, I'll take five-minute break. Okay, we in recess. We're in recess.